Item four. We have a court. Item three on our agenda for this public hearing. And the purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested party with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA section thirty-six to six-seven eighty, that is, DC. This public hearing is now in session. Three A is considering retaining now the operation of fourteen point oh-five mills for the city of Perry. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. Councilmember, as you may remember, that you have established a policy a number of years ago to, if at all possible, not increase the millage, but to keep the millage the same rate as used before. We have received digest information. There is a slight increase in the digest value, and we are recommending to you to keep the millage rated fourteen point oh-five.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of fourteen point oh-five mill action? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against the remaining millage at fourteen point oh-five? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item four is items of review and discussion. Item four A is Officer, Officer of the City Manager. Four A one is Brownfield Engineering Proposal, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton and Council. As you're aware, the city this year was awarded a Brownfield Assessment Grant through EPA, a three hundred thousand dollar grant that will allow us to assess various sites of community for possible contamination and maybe even help finding that contamination if it's found. It's been an interesting process. We've officially accepted the board, done a lot of the due diligence on the front end. The actual grant period starts in October, and from then you have a two-year time period in which to spend the funds. So making sure that we're ready to go when October rolls around, we went ahead and sent out RFQ and received proposals in regards to engineering assistance with the project. It's a pretty in-depth type of project. You have engineers come in, they do phase one, phase two environmental assessments, that type of thing with the project identified. So we wanted to have that lined up with the RFQ process, receive two proposals, one for Cardo and one for TTO. We went through an objective evaluation process on those proposals, and staff has recommended moving forward with Cardo for our Brownfields grant project. Have you had any answering questions you might have?
Any questions for Mr. Smith, though, to this proposal or recommendation?
What way in town are we going to use this money?
It's a fluid situation.
Is right.
We preliminarily identified seven or eight sites around the community, typically where you have seen uses in the past, such as a service station, a filling station with tanks in the ground, or dry cleaners, or old industrial sites. I'd be happy to provide that list to you, but things, you know, since putting this project together and now moving forward, a couple of things have changed. For instance, originally we identified the pier station on Main Street as a possible brownfield site. Since then, the owners have apparently come in, pulled the tanks out, completed a phase one environmental assessment, everything's fine. So, you know, that project's off the board for us. It's really just a matter of identifying what we think are the most advantageous properties. So another site is the Kelwood Site, up at Kelwood Drive, former industrial property. There's an old dry cleaner on Main Street, the Abbot House Shopping Center in there. There's standing, there are a number of properties we have identified. Again, I'd be happy to pour along a preliminary list, but again, you know, this is going to be part of the process, is identifying properties that we actually want to utilize.
Is it not correct that the grant will cover the cost of the engineering costs?
This is a one-hundred percent reimbursable grant, this, sir.
There's no charge to the city for this engineering service, once we identify the sites that we want them to do the work on.
Yes, sir, that is correct. The only cost the city will do is staff time.
Any additional questions, Mr. Smith? No, Mr. Smith? Do we have some comments to move forward, this evening? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Item four A two is GDOT Transportation Alternative Plan or TAP grant project. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Proton and Council. You'll recall, I believe it was probably May or June, we came before you with the information that the Georgia Department of Transportation have released some additional funds under what they're calling the Transportation Alternative Program. And it's a grant project where communities of twenty thousand people or less can apply for funding geared towards infrastructure improvements that diversify your infrastructure away from vehicular dependence. That's the alternative deal there. So sidewalks, bike lanes, all that type of thing. GDOT wants to see communities come in and do something with those. There were a couple of simulations associated with that. The project had to be at least one million dollars, so they're looking for big projects, you know, something that is really substantive in a community, and they're also looking, working on a pretty quick timeframe with these applications we're actually doing at the end of August. And we, as a city, should you choose to move forward, we'll be committing to basically getting this thing going in FY 2019. Sydney, I think they did a deal with this, you'll take a look at it. Here you go. So Chad McMurray, the city engineer, has done a fantastic job in putting together some information for y'all this evening if you're consideration. Staff got together a number of times on looking at possibly moving forward. You'll recall, we first talked about this, so I say, "Go ahead, put something together and let y'all look at it." We thought that, given, y'all spoke some quality life, ultimate transportation plan, all those types of things, that we perhaps pursue a sidewall project, project based sidewalks. So you can see here, Mr. McMurray put together where we saw staff as very beneficial possible areas for sidewalks. And in Castle, that was twenty thousand linear feet of sidewall for the one million plus dollar project. And the listing is here, obviously, you know, costs and all that has yet to really be determined. This is a very good estimate, though, we feel. And on the second bullet point there, you can see back to the grant project. These are the three types of areas GDOT really wants to focus on. Again, the pedestrian stuff, streetskating type improvements, you know, the pavers and things will make our streets look nicer, so falls in line there with what GDOT's looking to fund, and then school connectivity. You know, I think we're very fortunate as a city to have a number of schools within neighborhoods and that type of thing. And a lot of these proposed sidewalks would connect existing sidewalks to schools and, you know, further build out the transportation network that we have pedestrians in the city. This is what staff is proposing we move forward with in an application. You can see it's a little bit over a million dollars. There is a twenty percent local match requirement. It's my understanding that Mr. Gilmore could reach into his pockets of funds and find that money, should we admit it.
Right.
But this is a non-binding thing to move forward with an application. It's basically the city saying, "Here, here's what we would like to do, here's how it will benefit the city, and we would appreciate y'all's cooperation on this." So I'd be happy answering any questions you might have.
Well, the only thing about, I always think we're going to sleep through that, though, and asking things about it, and I see you got a deal, but we couldn't take it all the way out to Lairawker? You couldn't go all the way out to Lairawker?
That's something we could look at.
Okay, 'cause you've got it coming from Guard Street, and then, well, we got it right there at about seventeen Marlothus, and then we got Guard Street, and then we moved out of Oakbridge to the next street. But then, it'd be nice if we could move right on to Lairawker, because that's where they connect it right there. And one thing for sure, I don't know what to kind of bring up or not, but for our children, the board education, they change a lot of stuff. All the kids have to walk down to the road right there at Marlothus King Drive. Everybody up that way has to walk all the way down there, and it'd be dark when you walk down there, so I don't know whether we have to talk with the board education about that or not. But that's something that I'm very interested in, that we need to look into, because we've got too many children walking down the street, and that, and they stand there, and that's it, and all the cars be coming by before they get on the school bus. And I would, if we do something about it, I would love to see it all the way down to Lairawker, because then that'll identify that whole Marlothus King Drive.
Is there a sidewalk over there in Lairawker?
No, no, not one there.
I think GDOT would prefer to avoid sidewalks kind of standing in places, really increase the productivity, but that's, I'll give a chat about that, see what I'd be able to do.
And this list is not binding. We'll check it then. Don't forget, we also have a recreation trail grant coming back down on Biggie and Creed Drive, and then coming over to Mary Walker.
Right.
Mary Walker Parkway. So this would just tie into the...
Okay.
I agree with you, that's already kind of included in the plan.
Oh, right, okay. If you wanted...
Oh, to make sure.
What other questions do you have?
And I have a question here. We are leaving one small section on Ball Street, on Dunkin' to Tucker. If you bring it all, if you bring it all the way from Loews to Tucker, and that'll dead end right there, and that small strip in front of the Hope Heating and Air and Water Supply is not built with a sidewalk there.
Okay.
And so that'll connect all the way down down, that'll connect all the way back down as far as it goes on Dunkin', it'll fight all those together.
Okay.
We had talked positive of going all the way to Dog shelter, but I'm not sure that that's, you know, something we need to do at the time, but if you're going to bring it to Tucker, I don't want a dead end of that, because it's about a half a block, and then you can tie all the rest up.
Okay, that makes sense.
And so you have a dog park, so you just stop it at Tucker, but bring it so it can connect with Ball Street and that half a block.
Okay.
The other question relative to the TAP sidewall project.
Please, this general idea, the council concur?
The council?
Thank you.
In changing hats for Mr. Smith, we will go to four B, which is Economic Development Department, and four B one is considered proposal for engineering services for improvements downtown, which is the alleyway improvements. Mr. Smith?
Yes. Mayor, Council. This request is pertinent to an ongoing issue that we have been dealing with in regards to the alleyway on the nine hundred block, between the nine hundred block and Commerce Street. You know, so between, you know, kind of behind like ResCare and the Pilgrim's Gallery Building, and then on the nine hundred block behind those merchants and things. There are a number of stormwater issues in there. It's, it's really hard to determine how the stormwater situation, but they're not the way it is. It's been kind of ad hoc, I believe, over the years, and there's also been questions in regards to actual ownership of the alleyways. Mr. Gilmore and I, Mr. McMurray, and some of the merchants there have been kind of looking at this for a while now, and we really feel that the best course of action at this point in time would be for the city to essentially assume responsibility or assume control of what we have determined at this point in time to be kind of a no man's land back there with the alleyway. About fifteen foot, I hesitate to call it an easement, but it really is basic easement, running through the alleyway there, and a lot of the stormwater issues and things are kind of emanating from that. So we think it's an excellent opportunity for the city to come in there, make some improvements that really need to be made, because it is having a negative impact on those merchants and property owners, and address the stormwater issues. So what we have for you tonight is a proposal from a local engineer here in the city to come in and actually survey out the area, determine where that no man's land exactly is, and do some preliminary engineering and that type of thing for what needs to be done in regards to stormwater improvements. You know, it's, it's been an interesting situation.
If we don't do this, we can't move forward with correcting the situation, because we really don't know what we can or cannot do. So this is the first critical step in correcting the stormwater issue.
It is, that it has to be done.
And help me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the stormwater runs under Tommy Long's building, that there's a stormwater drain pipe that runs directly under his building and catches all that stormwater from at least half of that.
There is, at some point in time.
It's untenable to have that kind of situation with the store owner.
And a lot of these, the floor level inside these buildings is actually lower than the outside alley, so what you're having is a situation where water's not coming in and seeping into the backs of their buildings, that type of thing. It's just not, not a good situation area. And it's one of those things where, you know, the private market, the private ownership or whatever, you know, it's not going to be corrected in the private market, so this is an excellent situation for the government to come in and correct that situation.
Well, they couldn't correct it anywhere on our property.
Right.
If we're the owner of that alley, or, you know, we have an easement, they can't do anything there either.
Thank you.
Well, we're clean, you have to understand.
And we have facilities there, there, we have gas and sewer running in the alleyway, so there's an applied easement.
Right.
But we're just going to assume control, listen, take control of the situation.
What questions do you have for Mr. Smith relative to this alleyway improvement project?
On my brain, there's some of that, I know we're talking, but I did get to this point, I guess, because a bunch of them complained about we didn't do something about it, you know what I mean? You were saying they got a low, if the base flow is low and we got a high, I guess that's something we got, and we're going to have a conversation for that, something that we're going to look into. You know, you were saying about some of the commotion flows are low, and the rain back in alleyway, it probably seeps into the flow, you know what I mean? And it get wet in there, you know what I mean? So I guess that's one of the complaints that been knocking at us all the time, they wanted to do something like that.
It's part of it, and, and you know, we're not going to be able to correct all of the issues associated with the private property, that's our responsibility, but we can come in there and make corrections and do some improvements in regards to the public realm that will help alleviate some of those issues. But, you know, as far as, we know with the census, you know, if we come in there and do what we need to do according to our engineers, and, and there's still things that need to be done on the private property, that's going to be their responsibility.
And what you're asking us for tonight is just preliminary approval, or doing the preliminary work to move forward, but we're not committing to any type of work. We're going to look at the recommendation, cost factors, we'll go into it, those type of things, when he gets to his, his calls, and engineering on that.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
You know, for example, if you take a look at the proposal, it may not get passed to number one, on the top of the graph, we'll serve it there. See where I am down there, about five thousand? If it doesn't work, or you all have determined it's not practical, you would spend what has to be done, take care of it, and move forward. But going back on your point, Mr. King, this has come up off and on for a number of years, but it's gotten accelerated with the improvements that were made to your jewelry store, you know, with the improvement downtown, that's, that's what's accelerating, you know, this request right now, because they, I think it's correct, I mean, I'm wrong, Robert, but in order, or one of the advantages they think they can have with their facility is to add on the rear of the building. But that's where you run into a bunch of the stormwater issues, even though it's their property to a certain extent. Everybody on that? So that's what, this will wind up going to determine whether we can actually go out and do anything to address that. All the significant rate events we've got this year, you know, we've been getting a lot of calls.
It's been a long time coming, it's been an issue down there for a long time. What about legal ramifications, or what do you have, motion? You can always have legal. I don't think they actually work with, although some of the property is owned by the store owners, there's also city utilities on that property, is that not correct, Robert? So although we don't own the property, we've got an interest in it. And I don't, I mean, I don't know who, well, somebody could raise a legal, at least make a legal issue out of it, but the people down there and, and the city, I guess, if they do it, all went the same way, isn't that correct?
I don't understand, you have to move forward.
And we'll do all the survey work and determine where, you know, if we actually have rights to that property, and then if not, we'll have to really give easements to the property owners to do, so. I think if you've got, if you've got water lines or something like that, and you have them down there, and you're setting them down there, I think you got an easement.
Well, I think it is.
What other questions? Is the council in concurrence to move forward with this preliminary work that was outlined by Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Item four?
I thought I said the man was big fan of it.
Yeah, sip of water, rest my leg.
A sip of water, the pressure's too high.
Got to say, "Hi, Greg."
Item four B two is the restaurant district boundary item, and it's something Mr. Smith wants to review relative to signage, the line, the restaurant district.
Just be grateful you asked, would you like me to do that?
So, yes, Mayor, Council. You'll recall at the last works at the session that y'all had, you were presented with a number of options in regards to moving forward with the rollout of the new restaurant district. I believe you took it all under advisement, and I'm here this evening to kind of discuss some of the options with you, and hopefully get a sense of what direction y'all might want to head with this. I've put together, it's a number of things for y'all to look at, and, you know, kind of say yes or no, or get some input, that type of thing. Of course, our restaurant district here, you know, very, very positive response from the community at this point in time, look forward to really getting going. Like everything we're doing now, you know, it's been, the best way of disseminating information and educating the public has been digitally, and we plan to roll out a very robust digital component associated with the restaurant district. Obviously, we have dedicated pages on the city website, provided, then you can download maps, our one pager that I believe you all got in your boxes in the last couple of days, and the actual ordinance in case you want to get into it. So providing all those information, all that information, meeting with merchants, all that, we're obviously already doing, having this available for when people Google it or whatever. And then also, the city app that we're in the process of developing out right now, we'll have a component associated with the restaurant district. And I believe I mentioned to y'all when we talked about the app, the possibility of geofencing, which is like super cool, and it's a lot of cities are trying to utilize it, but when you walk into, if you have our app, when you walk into the restaurant district, you'll get like a little notification on your phone saying you are in Hallow Perry's Restaurant District. And then you can click on it, provide some more information about what that actually means. So trying to be as comprehensive possible with this. Signage was something else, I believe you saw a little mock-up incorporating some of our current wayfinding stuff that we're doing right now. It's my understanding that y'all might be interested in a little bit, something that's a little bit more low impact, something that doesn't really have clutter necessarily associated with a lot of signage, something that could be there, could be present, but, you know, it's not one of those things you're looking at, where you're like, "Oh, now we're in your restaurant district," type of thing. So what we're proposing is basically a four-by-four aluminum post, you know, probably something not this high, has an angled tap on it that has information printed on the top, just so that people know that you're now in the restaurant district, and having those through some of the main thoroughfares throughout town, or throughout the district, actually. It's pedestrian oriented, you know, it's not something we want to really promote the vehicular traffic, and then also it's going to be, of course, incorporated into the downtown speed ops that we'll be discussing here in a little bit. Just to get a sense of what I was talking about here, this is one variation that a fabricator puts together, that has the, again, the angled taps there, the posts, and then the Perry information. It's not, bear with me here on these little mock-ups I put together, but something like this, you know, it says city of Perry Restaurant District on it, it'll have like a link or something like that with information to it, should you choose to do that, and then, you know, of course, our logo and all that. It'll look very nice, should be very durable, and again, should be low impact and not really have the clutter effect that a lot of signage might have if you're trying to really distribute the signage throughout the district.
I take it either four inch by four inch, not four feet by four feet?
Okay, four inch by four inch, yeah.
Just clarification.
This is something that, you know, if y'all have any input on, would be beneficial, I think, and thinking about where to locate these posts, I was kind of thinking about, well, where are people walking from, where are people walking to, where are some of the main pedestrian thoroughfares downtown? And this is what I came up with, it's actually, we have eleven locations downtown where these posts could be installed, and, you know, if you think this is good, you know, that's fine, if you have some other recommendations, that's also, it's kind of a, it's a hard balance between having too much signage, not enough signage.
Okay, my question is that, are they going to be, I don't know why I missed it, how tall are they going to be, and just going to be for pedestrian walking and for car passing by?
It's going to be pedestrian oriented, yes, sir. And, and you know, it's going to be like post high, something like this.
Close to thirty, thirty inches or something like that?
Yes, sir, I'm terrible with those types of things.
What you're saying is about thirty inches, when you say about that high, that's about thirty inches, you know what I mean?
Right. It's very, very low, low impact type of thing, just right above your cup.
Okay.
Fine lines are just be placed in the right of way, where we have right of way at crosswalks and stuff like that, so we'll keep it between.
And something like, I don't know why I'm thinking about it, it's going to come a time when we're going to keep people from going downtown, they got a park over there, a walk downtown? You know, in some cities we went to, they have a section there, and that they, they have to, to, you know, to get down there, you can't drive downtown, you can just walk in the section, you know what I mean?
You would have a venue if you tried.
Okay, I don't know why it just popped in my mind, so I thought I threw it out.
Well, I'll let it back up. Even if you don't do that, y'all mayor may not remember that Robert talked about, so the DDA is doing a parking study. So you may wind up having a deal, for example, where additional parking is off on the perimeter. And so going back on your point, Mr. King, you could have some people coming in that do have to walk into downtown.
And I think we need to make people aware that they're coming into an open container here. When they see people, they don't know what's going on, but I think it's just, it's a good practice for us to make them aware of what the boundary is.
And this came out of your point, it is, following Mr. Gilmore, it is generally considered the best practice to have parking on the periphery of downtown, people walking through the board, so.
I think if, you know, the food bin, we are, right now, we're always locking off street, where people can't, can't come down there anyway, you know what I mean? Just for food bin, so if we had it already in place, you know, the food bins can get in there, so nobody, you know, the one that may just felt over there, the police, you know, they got to make sure that people ain't going to come through there about putting the barrels out there, you know what I mean? I'm just saying that's something to think about in the, in the future, where we do it now or not, but it's something that we can, we can, we can take a look, you know what I mean? The food bin will come once a month, I think.
The food truck? For certain parts of the year, something around there. Any questions on locations, proposed locations?
They look pretty good, man.
Just don't use that map. You got Courtney Hodgins on the railroad by the time.
Oh, yeah, nice. Totally know that.
Thank you, we, I thought it was just me.
We have just had a bad day.
Oh, did we forget to mention their relocation? He probably comes on the pod.
And also, this is something that, too, we wanted to be able to provide appropriate signage for the merchants and businesses, the property owners downtown, should they want to participate or not, you know, make sure they have that option. And we haven't put anything together yet for y'all to look at, I just kind of wanted to get some, some direction from y'all, but what I envision would be some sort of situation where produced cleans, like window cleans, that property owners could put in their storefronts, either saying yay or nay in regards to outside beverages. You can see here, the city of Monroe actually put together what I think is a very, very nice thing here about, you know, basically saying, "We'd like to have it," between all that, and then something that could be just kind of basic and similar, you know, no alcohol beverages, you know, politely declining. So that's something I'll be interested in doing, too, that's certainly something we could put together. It'd look a lot nicer than this one, be more akin to this, but...
Y'all would think the merchants would want that. Some, some merchants are not going to want an open container because of their inventory and just their preference, so we need to give them the option to say that, you know, an open container is not welcome.
I agree, and they all like the idea that...
On that issue, is there any additional questions?
I don't know why I'm just thinking of that, but on the open container, if I got to be downtown, now I want open containers, if we have a perimeter where people who do have open containers, they have to walk, or they can walk anywhere?
No, you can't come inside. No, you see, we'd just be on the store door where they would come in and say, please don't bring it inside, and they'll be on the sidewalks, and if they make a decision to say, go into Mimi's to go shopping.
So I need to leave my container downtown?
Yes, but it's a hangout. That is the intent, I think.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any additional questions, Mr. Smith? Are you ready to move forward with this?
Yes.
So you're, you will bring a cost estimate back to us, I take it?
I'll get you all the information I'll need.
Do you have concurrence to Mr. Smith move forward with this project as outlined?
Yes.
Do you have concurrence, thank you.
Thank you.
Item four B three is the downtown kiosk location by Mr. Smith.
This is following up on a conversation, I was mentioning about in the last work session, we talked about the kiosk location, I just wanted to get some direction from y'all and move forward with this. So you, you will remember, you were presented essentially with two options in regards to where we're seeing the possibility of the kiosk locating. The first one is here, this is Ball Street, this is Carroll Street, so this is the nine-hundred block and Ball Street, right here, right in front of the Chamber of Commerce office, and then across the street is another location, and this is at the intersection of the eight-hundred block and Carroll and Ball Street, right here. So basically, you know, right there, this is kind of the center of downtown, we thought it'd be most appropriate to be in this general vicinity. If y'all have any other ideas in this regard, we've spoken of those as well, but this is kind of the two we're looking at. The first option here is one that was actually presented by the Main Street Design Committee, and this is in front of the Chamber of Commerce there on the right of way where the sidewalks are, you can see a little mock-up here. This one has no parking impact, like you'll see the second option, it actually has an impact of parking downtown, would remove one byproducts, it'll be think it's a little bit less visible, particularly if you're kind of standing away from whatever, kind of lost a bit in the mix, if you will, and, you know, this, it would be easy to install, and there's no issues with insulation or any of that type of thing. So that's one option. The other option that we're exploring is, again, the eight-hundred block and Ball Street. What you have here is, this is kind of the existing area, this is our Confederate monument here, this is actually a parking space, and what we're proposing is coming in, bricking up that parking space, or removing one parking space, and using this opportunity to create a pedestrian plaza, kind of another focal point downtown, if you will. This, this intersection here, this corner in particular, generally is kind of lacking right now, we think it'd be a nice opportunity to come up and soften things up a little bit, provides greenery, provide, you can see here, maybe a bench or something, and again, apologies for this kind of mock-up, it's not going to be something like this, but it's kind of giving you the general idea, creating something downtown. And, and we think this spot is very, very visible, both from, basically anywhere on Ball Street and almost anywhere on Carroll Street, and we think it'll help draw pedestrians passing on their block, towards eight and seven hundred block on Carroll Street, and this recommendation is actually being put forth by SNAP, and it is supported generally by the Chamber of Commerce and the Perry area CDP. So these are the two options we're looking at, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and happy to entertain any sort of other options you'd like for us to explore in regards to downtown kiosk location. Which one is that, which one?
Now, we, we show a bench there, but when we actually come up with a design, it may be some type of brick, you know, something like that, a little more permanent, but the primary thing we're interested in right now is a determination from council about, yes, this location is okay, and you have a general idea about the sign, you know, that y'all approve, your last meeting, that's where it'd be located.
Any additional questions from Mr. Smith? Okay, do we have a concurrence that the location should be at the corner of Ball and Carroll and the eight-hundred block?
Yes.
Do we have concurrence from this group to give Mr. Smith permission to move forward getting the design completed on this and bringing it back to the office desk, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda of other business and supplemental agenda, five A is a resolution or resolutions, if it would be, for introduction and adoption, five A one is a resolution approving the supplemental contracts for junkyard natural gas pressure improvement project. And I know, I'm sure every one of you read the ninety-seven pages that were included. Mr. Gilmore, if you would like to.
I think there's actually some mistake, I think this is supposed to be Mr. Smith as well.
Is it? I don't get it.
Not really. To, to avoid the whole deal on the ninety-seven or so pages and everything, you may remember that you previously had authorized the city to assume, I think, fifteen percent of potential liability. This is a same project, everything's the same, except that the projected cost is less now. The reason we have this here, why we're asking you to do a waiver of your standard process in the Bonnet, is that they need to have the signature pages tomorrow morning. Line up, the mayor's good to go to come in and sign it first thing, but we would like council, since there is a change in the amount, favorable for us, but change in the amount, for you to go ahead and approve the document and the execution of the documents as the mayor put in the statement.
I've been talking to the mayor, the original estimate of cost was nineteen million dollars, and that's what we approved the last time we approved this document. They went forward to, with new numbers, to a bonding agency in New York, the number came back at basically twelve million dollars cost, so the reduction was about seven million dollars in cost. But the item that, the resolution we're being asked is nine million dollars, because they feel like that they're going to have three million dollars in grants from the federal government that's going to come and pay, so basically what we're agreeing to tonight is our fifteen point four percent of the nine million dollars is guaranteed, so it's down significantly from what we had agreed to earlier. The second thing is that the bonding agency wanted every one of the cities that were involved in junkyard natural gas to have the same operating agreement, because they, as they have brought people on various times from the original group, and those operating agreements have changed, the wording in them were, they were different, and they said, we're going to do this for all the cities, and we want all the operating agreements. So you have a copy of all the operating agreements in there, and that, that is a change in what we would be agreeing to. What questions do you have? So can we vote this evening?
Yes.
I would entertain a proposal to approve this solution as requested by SNAP.
Same.
All in favor? Do you have an unanimous vote to move forward, Mr. Gilmore? Item six is council member items, Mr. Hunt, Mr. King, Mr. Pond, Grace, Mr. Jones?
One item I approached and contacted today by a resident on Park Avenue, and as you were coming off forty-one, you turned right onto Park Avenue, sort of the, I guess, ditch area, that I'm, have an eye on, that I'm thinking of that city right of way, especially with the parking lot, you know, there's a lot of trash filled up and so forth, so I said I would bring that over.
That's all I have. Getting up for trash or something?
Yeah.
Construction debris from where they were cutting the trees and all?
No, you didn't say construction debris.
Isn't that the corner where they put the parking lot in?
Yes, yes, it was, it was still a scrubbing, plain material. It might be required, but it's, it's, I think that's still would. It may be, and I told him. A little checkered, yeah.
One of the other items that comes up in Mr. Puntzberg, who is in his district, is citizens concerned about not a wide enough turning ratio on our street, and when our street comes in with, with the DOT route. So on a number of those, we have gone and talked with DOT, and most of the time, that's as far as it's gotten. I'm sure, I'll check on that aspect.
I appreciate it.
That's all I have. Anything? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Gilmore, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I do have one item, Mayor Proctor and Council. Saturday is our next Saturday cinema series, and it's scheduled for Creekwood Park, and it's kind of in coordination with the whole Splash Pad excitement and everything. The event starts at six-thirty, it'll be right there at Splash Pad pavilion, we'll be grilling hamburgers and hot dogs, and showing Moana, once the, once the sun goes down. Everyone's real excited about it, apparently it's a really good movie, but it should be a wonderful event, and we are keeping our fingers crossed for the weather. Forecast is not very favorable right now, but, you know, weather is important.
I thought we were going to St. Anne. I thought that's where we were going.
That's why. Talk to the weather lady, tell her we're good.
Very, I appreciate it.
Item seven is department items and staff. Mr. King, anything from your department?
Yes, just to let you all know that we were prepared for the audit, of course, and the auditors plan to be here for their fieldwork September seventeenth, so we will go back to you.
Thank you. I'm sure you'll do extremely well, as always. From the police department, Major Phillips.
That's in the night, though.
From the leisure services department, Mr. Di, anything?
Just one, sir, I wanted to thank council and mayor for passing, in my absence, the umbrellas and the benches. We have placed the order before to getting those installed as soon as we can at the Splash Pad. We've been receiving numerous comments in favor of the Splash Pad, basically, even in the mornings while the kids are in school, there's a lot of mothers bringing little ones out there. The parking lot's full all the time, I mean, it's always full, it's, it's going well. The first couple of weeks, we had a couple of bugs in the system with the filters and the sensors and all that good stuff, and we've got that worked out, and it's running really smooth, so it's been a, been a great project up to this point, but again, thanks for proving that, we look for, as soon as they get in, we'll probably have them in in a couple of days, right now it's a little hot, so, but it's been a success, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yes, sir. How about the bids on the tennis court, where they stand?
I, I believe we're going to go with a different strategy this time, and involve the, the tennis courts with the other parks when we bid them out, but there hasn't been any status movement on it to this point, not to my knowledge.
So we're not doing anything about it?
No, sir.
No.
We are preparing the document, we originally had a document out for construction management, and we were advised that was incorrect, because they passed a law, General Assembly that affected July first, you have to, excuse me, list these type of projects on a register and all that type of stuff, so we have gone back, we're preparing the documents, and all of the parks projects are going back out, as you may remember, that they all came in way over budget, and so we are hoping to cut the costs somewhat on that. In addition to that, we are talking with the Perry Public Facilities Authority about getting some additional funding.
Look to it, water tower, my bad, sir. You can hit a ball and get a crack in that ball. Mr. Smith, anything from public workers?
No, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing tonight, sir. Nothing tonight.
Chief Parker, Fire Emergency Service?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Lauren, name, name from the city clerk's office today?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Ms. Palmer?
I do, have a couple of things. Mayor Council, just a quick reminder about your city, we still have a few spots, so again, if you know anyone that'd be a great candidate and would like to be in the your city program, please send them my way. The first session will be September sixth, and that will be the one that includes mayor and council and how the local government works and is created and all that, so I hope to see you all there, I'll keep reminding you up until September sixth, but it does start at five o'clock, and we'll have it in here in the council chambers. Second thing is, last year, we, House and Home Journal does the Everyday Heroes magazine, and last year we did do an ad for this, thanking our first responders, and thought I would come to you all to see if you were interested in doing an ad again this year, thanking our first responders for what they do for us every day.
Counsel's thoughts?
Anything we can do to, to, their home, yeah. Half a page is six hundred dollars.
We did half a page last year, that was it.
Real fine, man.
Give it out, I want them, Mr. Please, what's it called?
Bucket.
Multiple bucket, right, a South Coast teacher. Any other thoughts about running an ad in the publication? Do you, Mr. Council, confer or move forward with that request? We have, we have concurrence from the council, please move forward for that.
Okay, thank you all.
I think that everybody, Mr. Thompson, do you have anything for us this evening?
Certainly, just as a reminder, thank you, Mayor Proctor, this Thursday is our legislative appreciation section, I think many of you are already registered, but if not, just give us a call at the chamber, we'd be happy to add you to that list, it is a go fish at five-thirty, and we expect about eight of our representatives regaling, and obviously House and County can be over at that night, and, and.
We will look forward to being there, thank you very much for attending. If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the items of personnel and pending litigation. All in favor? Thank you.